First, we'll call the work session to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call Brennaman.
Here.
Haley. T Show online.
They went back in the session.
Yeah.
Oh, they went back. Okay. Thank you. Mylan is? Malvany Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, may I?
And I want to take a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
This is Jeff. So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Brennaman.
Aye.
Malvany Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Dave's on there now.
Senator Haley, are you? Do you look like you're online with us now?
Same.
David?
Hello?
There he is.
Okay, good. I've been trying, been trying to get on. I was there at roll call, but didn't come through. Good afternoon.
Jeff, there was. I will mark you as present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do, does any of the board members have any updates for many recent external meetings?
I attended the UG Public Safety Committee Standing Committee meeting Monday. And really wasn't anything that involved us. They did talk a little bit about the Kansas Avenue Bridge and the Central Avenue Bridge. They haven't decided yet whether Central, whether Central they're gonna, uh, whether it will be vehicular or whether it will be some other type of conveyance. They're working with Kansas City, Missouri on the, on the Kansas Avenue Bridge. But haven't really gotten anywhere, any, any place.
Okay. Anybody else? David, do you have anything to report?
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. So the EDNF, the UG's Standing Committee of Economic Development and Finance did meet on Monday, day before yesterday. And a couple of measures that came up regarding development, one development for what's called Mount Carmel. And Mount Carmel is, I think, 11th and parallel. And that they will need to work with some of the hookups that the utility did envision. They're a multi-use. And I'm sure there's more to come on that. The second one that was an action item is what is really the redevelopment of the Reardon Center. And what the downtown development is called the Lanier Project. And there was some good discussion and debate. Both of these measures did pass on to the full commission for further consideration. There was some good dissent about the Lanier Project. However, many community residents who attended were opposed to the demolition or to the reduction from 30,000 square feet of our only convention center currently in Wyandotte County, the Reardon Center, to 7,500 square feet. So there'll be more to come on that, but that was, those were the two major points from EDNF last Monday. And thank you for allowing me to share that report.
Thanks, David. Uh, Bill, any updates?
Yep. Couple. So first time I saw where was a $30 million price tag on the bridge, Kansas Avenue Bridge, is that for the UG or is that the total cost though?
That was the total, that was the UG's portion.
UG's portion. So it's a.
They're like, yeah, 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 their portion.
Okay, okay.
And then they had different ways, they had different ways they were gonna fund that 30, 30 million.
Okay. And I did go over to the UG as soon as I came back from, uh, getting away from the office. To attend a meeting with Willie Lanier and, uh, and the mayor, two of our large commissioners, Angie was here. Levert was there. I'm trying to remember who all in the room. Anyway, it laid out, we were talking about their original proposal, came back with a high proposal to keep the Reardon Center in place, do some renovation, take part of the space away, and then also build, uh, the apartment buildings attached to the Reardon Center. So that was one of the conversations. And I didn't listen this past week, this week, to see how the conversation went when they went before the Standing Committee. I did hear that that was being advanced to the full commission for consideration to. Cause I had that.
So is it a change from what he originally planned?
So there was, there's three options from what I understand. One is, three options, thank you, three options from what I understand. One is the original plan was to take down the Reardon Center and put an apartment buildings there. Second option was to leave the Reardon Center where it is. The UG would have to come up with a way of renovating and opening it back up. And Willie would go directly across the street from BPU and build an apartment there. And then there was kind of a compromise option, came back, taking part of Reardon Center out, leaving part of it in. And then also building the apartments on the same grounds and attach it to the Reardon Center. So.
So Lanier's back in the picture again because he was out for a while, wasn't it? They completely mixed that.
Yeah, well, I think there's, and the UG can speak to this more than me. I think, I think that there, there's a different opinion as to which one of these options should advance. So.
So in the previous administration, I thought something was sort of settled.
It never got all the way through the full commission.
It never got through in the previous.
No, it had gotten through. Then there was a development agreement, but then he needed an extension. And so to complete, there were timelines and he needed an extension that would have required the full commission. And that was never, um, that was never put forward to the full commission.
I remember it went through Standing Committee. I just, I didn't think that it had passed the right commission.
Yeah, I thought originally in the last administration, it was kind of cut and dried. And then something happened.
Right. And then there were just construction delays or loan delays. I, I don't, I can't speak to what delayed it, but he needed an extension in that. It's once the extension didn't, um, happen, then everything, the agreement terminated, self-terminated. And then they had to start over.
Okay.
And there is an agreement that we. There was an agreement that we have with Lanier Projects to share some of our parking space. So if that project don't come through, I've already had conversations about ending that agreement. Go back to reclaim all the space of 75 parking spaces. But during the time for BP's close on the weekends, he's got access to more. If they're gonna have things in the Reardon Center or things in the convention space that he was planning, you know, that his office would be closed, he can invite in more people to do that there. It wasn't free. They were gonna pay us. It's a long-term agreement. I think it had like a 10-year term that could be either renewed or finished at any point. So. So that's kind of where that's at. So it's up to really commissioners and the air on what actions they want to take further when it gets re introduced at the, at the commission meeting.
So it's on the agenda for the next meeting?
I think it's headed that way. I'm not sure what meeting is gonna show up on.
Right. And it's, those agendas aren't out yet. So I'm not sure when it would come. And I, and I believe Willie only advanced two of those options. The third option of parking lot, he did not take forward.
Right.
David?
Hello. Hello?
Yes. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, thanks for unmuting me. Again, I raised my hand. There are a couple of items. And like you said, there were several plans. There have been several plans with the Lanier, Willie Lanier's project. At one point in time, it was gonna be in the parking lot over there by the Merc. And I mean, the real chagrin, and I don't know what's, it will be on the next commission meeting, but I think when it'll be taken, they want to fast track this. It's been four years in the making to try and decide where or if this is even going to happen. And there's some people who are quite anxious to get it going. He's looking for, I think, about 800, some odd thousand, uh, to reimburse the effort where they've come up to this. And that too will have to be decided. Um, but the concern of the community was really interesting. I don't know how it's gonna play out, though. The majority of the Standing Committee did advance it. Some of those in those districts are concerned about downtown. But I think Commissioner McKeonan, who, that's his district, as well as Commissioner Townsend, whom many in her district want to have that, at least a larger presence of defining the downtown with the convention center are still grieving a bit, uh, that this plan may go through with a, a real shortened community space, basically just a large meeting room instead of having a convention center. So we'll see where it goes next time, but I just thought I'd add that, that editorial postscript. And thank you for allowing it.
And David, I, I also echoed part of that by saying, uh, I don't know what size or what dimension, uh, the meeting space or convention center needs to be, but if the entire Reardon Center comes down, then the city should consider some convention space somewhere else downtown, especially with all the other economic development things that are slated to come downtown. How much of that ends up moving forward, see, but, but it's hard to imagine any town this size without a downtown convention center. I've been, I challenge everybody that was in lifting range to aim in the other city, 160,000 people that don't have some type of downtown convention space.
Thank you. I concur.
Uh, so I would like to move in, and, uh, on the 23rd, we did have a group of nonprofit organizations to come in. We had asked them to come in and gather and talk about our utility assistance program. United Way also came in and only had Janetta, Lori, Jeremy, and can't remember who else. David was attending. And then I, I'll link the end remotely to listen, but I wasn't there face to face to be able to see things. And I am getting followed. I took a lot of notes, but I am getting caught up with, uh, kind of what each group brought to the table. So I've asked Janetta to come in, give about a 10-minute overview of what was discussed and, uh, what, what our takeaway was from that conversation.
So as Bill stated, Lori, Jeremy, and David did attend. I also brought in Gabby Freeman, Customer Services, and Dorita from Collections. So we could answer any questions they might have. And so we did have a good turnout. We had about 14 to 16 agency members that did attend the meeting. We had the Salvation Army, EOF, United Way, Catholic Charities, Avenue of Life, and Cross Lines all had representatives there on that day. And so what we wanted to do is just kind of have a meeting back and forth and discuss kind of what questions they get from their clients that come in, what questions they may have, any explanation we could do for our programs, any recommendations they could have, how we could have uniform messaging between the utility and across all of the agencies to help our customers. And so some of the things that we did get to talk about was payment arrangements. That was something that they said a lot of the clients, and, and they want to know how they can be successful with their payment arrangements, or if they can get a payment arrangements, and what they're confused about, about their payment arrangements. Because you know that you have a current bill, but we also put you on a payment arrangements for six months. You have a date that you have to pay your arrangement, a date that your current bills do. Their suggestion to us was, could we combine that into one, which is something that we were already working on, that other utilities we see that they do, they'll take the arrangement and a current bill that they've put over a certain amount of time, add that together, and then it's due on one date instead of, and some of our customers say they would like it to be on one day. Others say, I'd like to pay my current bill here, and two weeks later, I'd really like to pay my, my arrangement here. And so, you know, it's just going to depend, but we, we would try to see what the majority would want. They also asked about stretching our arrangements out for 12 months instead of six months. And so we kind of discussed that and the possibility of that and how successful people could be with that program. I did let them know that we did do that during the period of COVID. We, you know, allow people to have 12-month arrangements. Not, a lot of people took advantage of it at that time. And we didn't have very many people complete 12-month arrangement. Now, that could have been due, they said, to the fact that they were getting a lot of other assistance at that time and that they were finding other ways to pay. So we did have a, a good conversation about that.
Anything come up about Flex Pay?
It did. It did. And that was one of the other things I was gonna talk about.
Just wait till we get there.
So we had a good Flex Pay discussion. And we also showed them where you could find information online about that. But I think they were very confused, they said, about Flex Pay. And what, what we did tell them, if a person goes on Flex Pay, there's not a deposit. And if they've already been in post-pay and they've paid a deposit, it gets refunded back to the account before they're moved to Flex Pay. And I think one of the things that they said they did not really understand was the fact that a person can decide how much they want to pay as long as they do not get a zero balance. And so I said, a person can be very successful because we're not telling them how much they have to put on the account. I said, so when they see that they're getting to a low balance and they're getting alert, because they get, because they're on my usage and they get a low balance alert. And I said, at that time, if they can look at and trend and you can help them to see from Energy Engage or what they're using there, if they're using about $8 a day, and they know in a couple of days it'll get them through the end of the month to another paycheck, I said, they can put $20 on me. That will take them through the next two days. They're gonna get a low balance alert, but it's not going to go to zero. I said, so as long as they do not go to zero, because in the next 24 hours, then it will be disconnected. I said, they can put whatever they want as long as they don't get to zero. And they said, okay, well, we kind of didn't really understand how that really works. So we had a really good discussion. They felt like they then were equipped to go back and have that discussion with them. They said, all of it was there, but they really just didn't understand. It's just don't go to zero. Don't go to zero and you can continue to put what, what you can. And then after that, I did explain though, Flex Pay is still a beneficial program because even if they do go to zero, understand if the service is disconnected, the other services we built for still continue, the water will continue. However, and then we asked if they pay an additional 30 because you don't want to pay exactly what's due, and then the very next day you get another low balance alert. But it's much less than a whole month or a couple of months or $400. It's a lot less that they have to try. And so take it in smaller chunks. So after we explained that, there was a really good, healthy discussion and they, they really liked that. They talked about deposits and the deposit being all at one time, or maybe separation of maybe over, you know, sometime that we can put in where it was extended over, like maybe three paid, you know, three bill lengths or something like that. So we had that discussion, which would help not be so much at one time for everybody to pay. So we discussed that. Um, they said, a lot of the customers still didn't understand the weather policy. And could we explain that a little bit better? And it was just an easy way to explain it, that we said, okay, basically, on any given day, if the temperature is going to be 32 degrees or below, we're not gonna disconnect electric. I said, but water can be disconnected at any time. And that was very easy for them to understand because if it's going to fall below 32 degrees within that, that 24-hour period, then the electric won't be disconnected, water can be disconnected at any time. So they said it's kind of easy to explain it. It seems like in simple terms, the way we explained that. Then we talked about putting 2-on-1 information from the United Way then spoke quite a bit about 2-on-1 KC.org and how that will give customers the ability, if they call there, it sees where they're at, it's answered 24 hours a day. And somebody should be able to answer that and help them, let them know what agencies are closest to them. And then we also talked about maybe the possibility of them adding some information for us or on the site about if they don't have any more funds for that month or for that time period. So, good. Uh, we asked about seniors. They asked us about seniors and how we have our late payment waiver for seniors and asked them, did they have any programs where they were addressing any of the needs of the seniors in the community, which they said they did not. Uh, I believe the only one was EOF, and they said only with commodities do they address seniors in our community with any services. They did talk about long-term programs that they have. And Salvation Army has Pathway of Hope. They meet with the case manager once a week. They talk about their housing, their bills, but it's, they do a two-year goal setting for them. And they said, there are sometimes challenges to keep people in the program for two years. But they said, I mean, they're trying to move them from here to this successful, being able to successfully, being able to pay their rent and their utilities and sustain, you know, their households, food and other commodities. Also, EOF says they have an in-depth research because a lot of times there's other resources that are needed, not just for utilities, but other resources. So if they get those calls, they try to go a little bit more in-depth than just what they may, maybe trying to meet up with his needs here, even if they said they don't maybe have the funds at that time. They will try to go in-depth to kind of see what other resources they have. They may be able to take the load off in this area, so they'll have more to put over here. So we had a really good discussion. Um, they asked us a lot, you know, questions. We asked them about their messaging across each other and, and, and how they work together and do they refer, um, them to each, you know, organization and how they work across the board with, you know, with their messaging. But it, it was a really good discussion. At the end, we got a lot of positive feedback that they were glad that we had done that, that we had had that conversation. We had done it prior to them with just Avenue of Life. And then extended it to all the agencies. So Jeremy, you have anything?
It's a good discussion. I am interested in a couple of those. Um, a couple of the providers have programs to try to help people help themselves. If that makes sense, they're not just a, a source of funding. And so I'm kind of interested in how we can maybe be flexible for those groups. If you can somehow like Janet was talking about spreading things out further, or can we take a phasmemmonary minute to a different length for these folks that are in these programs and we know they're helping themselves and we have a way to monitor that, you know, that they're in good standing with the program. I'm interested to see, you know, brought some of that up to Bill, Janetta, how we can, what can we do for those folks that are really making an attempt to improve their skill set, their position, not just get some.
One thing I got, one thing I got from it too is a few things. Uh, one was, you know, piggyback on both your messages. I think the agencies know that the days of cure is over and that some of them spoke to that. So there's not gonna be a lot of money to come to our customers to say, here is money to pay your bill. And they're trying to spread that message. They're also saying, how do we help you in the short run to get you on better footing so that you can be able to help yourself? And some of them knew, I think about, think about some of the other, uh, they know about the LEAK programs, they know about some of the energy efficiency efforts and stuff, things like that. So I think they understand that these are now ways that people can put in, uh, some successful solutions to their problems and not just, here's a few paycheck to get you over, you know, the next two or three months, but then you really don't remove the problem. It's still there. So, and, and I'm glad that they all picked that up. And I'm glad that they're having that conversation with customers. Because, you know, I think we all want to support programs, but we want to make sure that the customers are in these programs for a temporary period. And then they can move on, you know, not just move into a program and then they stay planted there. They can't find their way out of it. So because there's not too many success stories there. And they can't get out of it, you know, but, you know, building a bridge to better sustainability and, and a better way of life, I think is what we all want to try to help, help people with. The other thing is I, I was interested in, in, in hearing the conversation between the agencies to seem like they were helping each other out. Well, and they were, they started asking each other questions. Uh, I think one of them was, Janetta or somebody said, that we heard that you only take applications at this, for this one hour, two-hour period. And then the other goes, well, is that all you're doing? Well, we, we have our doors open for this. And so there was a lot of exchange between, between them, one agency trying to help the other agency out. And I think that was all good conversation as well.
So my thing would be, you know, from the, from the time that I finally grasped the Flex Pay, you know, I believe it is the solution to a lot of, of people's issues because, you know, it lets you manage your, it lets you budget your, it forces actually, let me change that, to, it forces you to budget your utility usage. And and when somebody does run into an issue where, you know, you get shut off if they have, they're not building this continual, you know, they're, they're not getting hit with a $300 late bill. It's the small amount, a small hill to tackle to get back in. So, and I, and I know that everybody's scenario is, is gonna be different, but I'm trying to think of how do we, you know, how do we take away the reasons why? And make, like, is it access? Is it, is it the ability to maintain the system and, and me know, like, I signed up for Flex Pay and I, I'm 85 years old and I don't have a smartphone and I don't have, how do I, how would I manage that? I want to, I want to think of how we, our program is limited. And what we can do to remove as many of those limitations as possible so that we can offer it. Because the other thing that I, you know, I keep thinking about is the, the dollars that we were talking about for home improvement. I think that if you, if we pursue the people at the bottom of the economic ladder, you're gonna get your biggest bang for your buck. You know, it's a limited number of dollars, but, but what you're doing is you're helping those people that, that are, like you said, they're in that funnel and they can't get out of it because they don't have enough money to fix anything. So they just keep getting high bills. So if somebody could help them make it to where all of a sudden my $300 a month utility bill is only $200 a month, I just got another $100 that I can spend on, you know, improving my life. Where somebody who's more comfortable than that, I, you know, I don't know. Anyway, I'm just thinking that, that uh, we need to think about how we can take away any hurdles, as many hurdles as possible for like, helping people get on the Flex Pay. Especially if the agencies are gonna start talking about it to the, to the customers, we're gonna see, you know, an increase in activities. We want to be prepared. So if somebody comes in and goes, I can't, then there may be some that I can't, I don't have this, or I don't, can't do this. Okay, I'm sorry, we can't do that. It costs too much. But what we can remove, it would be nice.
Would you remind me again, how many customers we have on Flex? Do you know, just offhand?
I did get that number today. And I, I believe it's, oh, gosh.
It's always a smaller number than I'm anticipating.
Right. All right. Let me, let me get you, let me just.
1300.
Was it 13? I was like, I, I was gonna say 11, but I think we're up at 1300 now.
Okay.
Right. So like, you know, we gained some, we lose some. At the first of March, going into the month of March, we hit 1320. I think we ended up a month with 1316 because we have, we'll have some people that get off or some people that move. So the number goes up and down, uh, every month. But I think the last time we gave you guys a, a, a number was maybe around 1,100 or so. So we already have, we, we, we are continuing to 1,100, 1,200. So we are, and we talk about it, as we talk about it with people. And one of the things that is most interesting to them is that they don't have to pay a deposit.
That's.
I think.
And that you can still go on the Flex Pay with a balance. And so what we do if somebody calls and their service has been terminated and they can't get that service, but they just say they don't have that, one of the very first things we offer, even prior to contacting agencies, is that they say, we have another program. Let me go ahead and tell you about that and see if this is something that you would like to consider. And then we tell them about the Flex Pay program and how that if they have a deposit, that deposit will be credited back to their account. They can get on the Flex Pay program for this amount of money. We tell them how then you maintain that. But also whatever they may have been turned off for $500, they may be able to get on it for this. And then they wonder, well, what happens with my four? You just writing that out? Well, no, that goes into debt recovery. So that anytime you make a payment, 75% of that goes, and we explained this to the group, 75% of that goes to then prepay your account and 25% goes to pay that balance off. And so we're taking that in small amounts if that's being paid off. And then once that amount's completely paid off, 100% of what you put on the account goes toward prepayment of that account.
So I did say something to Janetta about, you know, you and this year to make a really, really hard push. So I did say something to Janet about, you know, using this year to make a really, really hard push to try to get more people in. And uh, now we haven't worked out all the details or may, may have to be some creative things that we haven't tried. And we may have to try those things for a long. In order to make it work soon. But I'd like, we'd like to see some real effort there.
So Janet, so for customers who are on Flex Pay, do we just issue the other part of their bill just normally? They don't receive the bill. So like their U G charges, need to go back to them. How do those get paid by these customers?
Okay, so the way the U G did, the way the whole entire was is that it's spread over, I think when we. Did those base charges like your trash, anything of this like that is divided into thirty-three point. One day or thirty-three point three days, something like that. I can't remember exact calculation. But that's why our program took a little bit longer. I don't know if any of you remember to start that program because we do have those charges.
So the entirety of the bill is subject to Flex Pay?
It's everything.
It's everything, everything. So when you pay it, you, you, you're paid. So as long as it does not go to zero. Then then that bill's paid. The only thing is when it does and we stop, when we stop those charges, they'll, they'll continue. I mean, they're still going to have those. Because it's on a daily basis that those charges, but as far as their usage. They don't have any more usage charges of electricity. They would have the water and the rest of those charges. But normally it's a small amount when they contact us, when we tell them, or they look and it'll tell them how much they have to pay to get the service restored. It's just normally that day, the next day, it's those charges. Plus, we put that additional thirty dollars. So it gives you three to four, four to five days before. Your service is then subject to disconnect until you can get some.
So, so each day that they're shut off, they're, they're accrue one thirtieth of all the charges except for electric. So technically, if they wait a month to turn it on, they'll pay, they'll be like paying a month's bill with no electric charges included. Because they'll be paying all the. Because there'll be no pilot sales on dollars, but anyway.
So it it's, it's a much smaller amount. People find that much easier to pay that amount to get turned on than saying, I just got here with the hu- huge bill. And I now I can't pay this to get my services turned back on. They're just looking at that amount. That they need to pay to get the service turned on and then keep it on. But if, like I said, even if it says you have a low balance loan, you have five dollars left on your account. If you could get something and always say, let's look at, kind of look at what you use. This is about how much, and it's going to be different in the winter and the summer. It's going to be different in how much they use, but if they can pay that for maybe a couple of days. So we do have people that put ten dollars on there. We do have people that put twenty dollars on there. And we did discuss our payment as we have a different, if we have payment as post-pay and Flex Pay. And there is a minimum and maximum and they ask us about maybe changing some of those minimum and maximums on that. To help our customers out, which is. Something we do, we absorb the fee on that. So that would involve more when they're lower amounts more often.
But the biggest takeaway here, another David's got his hand raised. Uh, biggest takeaway here was, it was a healthy conversation between all three parties, right? Us, the nonprofit groups and United Way, pretty good dialogue. I think David took his hand away.
Well, here's one thing that maybe we could consider. I don't know. I, I know. All central rest there, but I know they, they have a budgeting program that they used to. Um, I was on that board a couple of years ago and they had a, a program where people could go in for, for budgeting and mostly it was.
Life skills.
Yeah, I was kind of learning how to uh handle a mortgage or how to handle a home loan and whatever. But if there's some way we could have somebody from the utility give one. Uh, one evening's presentation or one day's presentation at those. Those organizations that have an ongoing um group like that, maybe we could have somebody present something about our Flex Pay. So they, you know, would know a little bit about options that we have.
I think there is. I'm pretty sure there is. I'll look it up, but I'm actually, I'm pretty sure David, that David asked about that and there is YouTube video.
So Janet, one thing of what just got to be talked about is. I know you, United Way funds a lot of nonprofits in one county and across K C, okay? And part of what, and and it goes way beyond our utility assistance. And one thing that that some of these groups are talking about is. They're meeting with people who show them basic household accounting, you know, how to budget, how to balance their checking accounts and stuff like this. It may be an opportunity where we get United Way involved with some of these other ones to, to talk about here, some of the things that. Utility's trying to help out with. And it's just a matter of getting a message to, and getting it out to all of these, all these agencies and I. Used to know, because I used to be an agency relations uh committee. I don't remember now how many, but I'll, I'll get that information. And maybe me, you and Todd can sit down and talk about, how do we get that in front of. Or just our utility assistance, nonprofit groups, but everybody that United Way funds.
That's a good idea.
There's a couple of presentations that I know Mark go to in the evenings. It used to be at the library when they were doing energy efficiency. Patrice and David used to do those different ones and we included that in there. And so he was there.
So Duchesne right across south of us, I know they do a lot of health stuff. They do other support. The uh place over in the children's camp was. Can't think of the name of it, but you guys have all heard of it. They do, right. We'll, we'll put something together and talk to United Way and see if we can get something. Uh, anything else before we wrap up? Next thing on the agenda is Glenn to come in to give a update on the uh. Have some understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, Glenn gets ready. Um, I know Lori's probably seen a lot of darts come through and different things, so. Lot of information being tracked throughout the year down the plant. We roll that stuff up into prioritized initiatives for the outages along with. Just some things that are on already, you know, regular maintenance intervals. So uh, plant went into outage on Saturday. Depending on what all gets discovered during the um outage and tearing various parts and pieces apart. That'll determine the actual length of the outage, but so far, so good. Um, some of you do, I know here from. Some employees from time to time at the plant, um, and yes, the evening there was one of the contractors had a little. We'll call it a. Fainting incident. Um, and there was an ambulance called, so if any of you heard any of that, nothing major happened. Uh. Don't believe any treatment was required. It's.
Just observations.
So I'll be there and with that, we'll let Glenn kick through.
Uh, when we're now, uh, give you a little update here on near outage. Uh, thanks to David Noah for this wonderful picture. Yearman looks really good. Uh, safety, I'm going to go through the agenda, go through a safety topic, give you an update on C P four nozzle refurbishment. We'll look at nearman outage scope, the major capital and expense work. Explain a little bit of the why and why and then post outage testing. So all these things are done, just the six week duration of the outage. It's. Really in front and everything in back. So my safety topic, I go to the SharePoint site. I really like this tool that I T has provided us. It gives us a good way to communicate. A lot of things that we do to the other divisions. So this is from top to bottom, the website. It's a, you know, our strategic goals, what we do, blah, 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 and stuff. Days online and injury-free workdays. But down here on these little tiles. I can pull up our outage schedule and share that with everybody, you know, at B P U. Partly I'm trying to do technique, so I just do a death by power play. Uh, so this is our outage schedule. This is a list of all the work we've accumulated over uh the year. And we've been planning this outage probably since September, October of twenty twenty-two. And what we tried to do is lay out a simple Gantt schedule for all the work listed and. All the coordination activities that will need, all lockout, tag up needs that we'll have, any safety issues, safety concerns. And who's actually going to be doing the work and who's responsible for the project. So this is just a, a listing of those jobs that we're going to do during the six-week outage. And so they're broken up basically by who's responsible. And down here is capital work that I want to speak to because those are the big hit items that we have. So if anybody's interested in knowing a little bit more about individual. Jobs, projects, I certainly delve into that, but it's a lot of information to absorb. So. Just, there is a lot of work that goes into this by the team and assembling all this is, is pretty remarkable from where we were a couple of years ago. So last meeting I asked uh for a budget transfer. You know, a lot has happened in a short period of time and thanks to Lori and her team, we're moving along smartly on this project. Uh, so after our meeting, we've selected our vendor Sulzer. That was done on three twenty. Uh, we had a purchase order approved in seven days, which is, I don't know, that's the speed of life. I think for us, it was really nice work by Becky and uh, our team, so. And actually getting those guys to mobilize and get on site this Monday before three. Uh, already the nozzles have shipped offsite. Uh, combustion liners came out this afternoon and actually will be shipped tomorrow. There's going to be an estimate of about six weeks of shop work to clean and refurbish the nozzles. E P A on install, post outage tuning to be determined. We're estimating four twenty-six. Into this unit back to the E C C. That post outage tuning, that's going to be really important. That's where we see if we spend our money wise. The one and the why, right? So the burner replacement is a multi-million dollar project. As you can barely see from the picture on the left, there's a lot of bit of warping of that tube. That delivers the coal into the boiler. And if you got really, really good eyes, you can see a lot of holes in the turning veins that actually distributed that coal into the furnace. When, when that wear occurs, you get a lot of what's called L O I, uh, loss on ignition. And that's just a waste of coal. That L O I goes to the bottom match, bottom match gets sent out and it's, it's wasted in dollars. So. You've done low-knots burners in the past, probably, I don't know, maybe twenty. I don't know, I wasn't here at the time, so uh, may have the data wrong, but. These burners, burners are upgraded with more, with better wear material on those turning veins at the very end. So will eliminate a lot of that wear and tear that you get from processing all that cold burners. So hopefully we get better performance at the end of the day. Another big job, uh, how many guys know what a generator re-wedge is? Let's re-pull the shorts up on the generator. Wedges are just material inside the slots. And during due to thermal cycles and normal wear and tear, those slots wedges get, become loose. Like six years ago, they noticed that it was getting problematic. They tapped in a few, they've replaced a few, but thi- this time we're going to do a complete. Re-wedge of the generator. So it's quite a bit of work and it's pretty expensive. Uh, that'll uh keep the unit running uh well for long into the future. Uh, if those do become loose and move, you can actually short your winding and that's kind of an end to life. Uh, good work to be doing on near. Catalyst replacements. So catalyst facilitates the notch removal process in the presence of ammonia vapor. These are multi-million dollar projects over a period of years of procurement and then install. It'll be the first layer this year, the second layer in twenty-five and the third layer in twenty-seven. We determine replacement based on activity testing. So we'll actually take a sample of that catalyst material. Send it to a lab and they'll tell us how much activity is left. There's also a high ash environment. You get plugging, masking, erosion. And in some cases poisoning of that catalyst there requires replacement. And that's part of our compliance picture as well.
Len, before you move, when did the, that go in?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. So we, so is that going to be our normal expectation? Seven years we'll start to recycle.
You've gotten a lot of years, normally five years.
The changes and the unit itself, though, it'll last forty years. It should be. Material inside that gets changed, right?
Uh, the casing, these are the cases that I probably could have got a better picture, but those are modules that go inside. And they get removed and replaced. That's a new one.
Yeah, but but the big structure, it's.
Yeah, it's.
It it just stays and it's just like. You know, little plugins, almost, except they're huge. No, but you know what I mean? They're just, they're just a component being removed and replaced.
Right. There's four empty, there's four layers, three are occupied. We systematically replace those layers over time based on all those factors, but we're at the end of life on that first layer. It sees the most erosion, sees the most. So post outage testing, uh, when we did the burners, there are certain guarantees from S A S Global, the company that did the uh. That was the final bidder, so we had to do some pre outage testing. We'll have to do post, uh, post burner replacement testing. And tuning for the unit because it'll act a whole lot different than it does now. We've got several conversions of P L Cs into our central D C S. I know that's a lot of acronyms that no one knows or cares about, but. For us, it's kind of exciting to have that in the D C S as opposed to a peripheral device. We're also upgrading the exciter controls, which will fire commissioning for some of the nerve standards. Bar reaction, oh, you know, critique and speak to that better than me. But we're also doing a lot of work that we observe during the year. So the, the work is all planned maintenance. Corrective maintenance that can only be done during outage, indoor lessons learned and projects to keep the unit more reliable and, and moving into the future. Uh, this is one recommendation that came from insurance that we actually never trip the turbine on vibration. So. We're going to do that this outage and uh, we'll take some monitoring and care and custody. So. That's really all I've got. Unless anybody has any questions.
You said that there's expectations on performance increase.
I gotta be very careful because that's like, that's a, it's really, it's more how much L O I. Percent, how does the ash change more than anything?
Well, I was, in my mind, I was guessing that the holes in the. Turbin. There is fresh coal getting through, escaping, I guess. And loss.
Yeah, it's.
Loss. Uh, we're having fuel loss. It's just, we're not getting the burn. So that's what I'm wondering. I mean, do we have any quantification?
Sure, uh, we do coal finest testing, we do burnup flow testing. We do several loads, several ranges, and we ramp it up and see how those flows for each individual burner are affected. So we'll compare performance improvements from the post.
And we'll be able to know. If there was very much return on, I mean, some of it is maintenance, so therefore.
I, I can just tell you that it's, it's um. Product maintenance issues and save money because you always have to go in there and weld those things up. Uh, every outage, um. Um, how to quantify it.
So, so it's more cost.
It will be less cost growth.
One of the things they've been trying to drive some efficiency laws with the help of our recent compliance group. And Glenn can tell you about it. We, we pivoted and, and we were processing, gathering data on using a different type of coal. It's pretty favorable, I don't know, so far.
Our conversion scenario for the bio is about a buck fifty more. Our conversion to N R F to the bio is about a buck fifty more per ton. But our reagent savings for. Act, which is our mercury control media, the lines. I'm all increased by a third, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm, it's it's probably in my mind, I'm thinking about when we went to the low notch burners. And part of the whole spell was, you know, it's going to increase your efficiencies or the burn is going to be somewhat, you know. There was just a lot of it, so I'm still in that mode, but I guess now it's not so much. Upgrading is just. It's maintenance, it's replacing stuff that is starting to lose its its efficiency.
It's like having your. Oh, it's very erosion. When it just tears up. That's what sees most of the oil in the air.
So does Glenn, does the testing, the post testing, does that? I'm like at the very end of the six weeks or is it still just incorporated within that timeframe?
It's incorporated in our startup schedule, so there's a lot of. Ice dot east across, but you know, we should be able to start up and run just fine. And then it's going to be working with E C C to get steady state loads for periods of time, so we can. Collect the data, collect samples, measure oxygen, measure L O I. Sample the ash, it just takes a period of time, a couple of months, I would imagine.
Okay.
Then there'll be combustion tuning and. Fine tuning that. That O two curve and all those things that we watch very carefully.
Will it be available for the S D P in those? Post testing, no?
So it won't be in market, it'll be self committed because we got to control where it goes to get. Similar data from what we got.
Okay.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn, Jeremy, Jenetta. Work your updates, so I think that's all we have. For today, unless there's any other questions.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second, a roll call, please.
Roll call, Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley. I'll come back, Mylan. Well, Vanny Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Haley. And yes, there was a forum. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.